Any other elected officials? Mr. Chairman. Thank the Judge for being here. I'll call the meeting order and remind you to turn off all cell phones next 100 pages as it does interrupt our production. Marsha, will you bring that up please? This morning for our invocation and pledge, we have Pastor Ron Cooper with Rock Church in Dallas. Would you stand with me if you're able?
Begin with the invocation. Lord Jesus, we come today first of all giving you thanks for your mercy, for your goodness, your grace, for all that you've done for us and all that you will do for us. And Lord, we ask today for this meeting that you would, your presence would be here, Lord, that you would help us with wisdom and guidance, direction, Lord, and patience. I pray that you're with us today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank the Pastor. Minutes, the April 28, 2015 work session minutes and April 28, 2015 board meeting minutes are available for you to view. Under announcements, I'd like to say there was a fabulous airshow and all the volunteers, um, Smith, Brent Sparks, and Colonel Carl Michael and all that was there. It was a fabulous day. Colonel, you want to report to us on the Veterans Day event?
We had over 120 veterans. First year we had 30, second year 40, and Friday we had 120 plus. Martina was there. Enjoyed having everybody, was just honoring them, focused on them. We didn't bring in any big time speaker, but they enjoyed the camaraderie and the entertainment. And it's just an honor to be able to honor them.
Colonel Carmichael was in charge of that and to me that was a highlight. Hearing come all the veterans, they've never felt more honored. So, thank you for being in charge of that. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Food Allergy Awareness Week proclamation to members of representatives from Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta, West Georgia Chapter. If y'all would come forward. Food Allergy Awareness Week, where food allergy is growing public health concerns. Food allergies affect approximately 15 million Americans, including 6 million children under the age of 18 or 1 in 12 kids in U.S. individuals with food allergies who also have asthma and may be interested in risk for severe and fatal allergy reactions. And there is, there is no cure for food allergy. Strict avoidance is the only way to prevent a food allergy reaction. The pollen foods account for 90% of all food allergic reactions: milk, eggs, peanuts, tree nuts, wheat, soy, fish, and shellfish. And whereas anaphylaxis is a serious allergy reaction that is rapid in onset and may cause death, if not treated promptly, anaphylaxis can be fatal. People with food allergies should always carry auto-injectable earphenrine, earwetanin, and anaphenrine to be used in the event of allergic reaction. And whereas eating away from home can pose a significant risk to people affected by food allergy, research has read that close to half of food-related allergy reactions are triggered by food served outside of the home. And whereas approximately 20 to 25% of anaphenrine administrations in schools involve individuals whose allergy was unknown at the time of the rest, Georgia House Bill 337 authorized public and private schools in Georgia to stock this supply of auto-injectable anaphenrine for use in emergency situations pursuant to Georgia law. Similar legislation recently passed in Georgia Legislature that will allow access to this life-saving medication in public facilities. Whereas the Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta and other state and national organizations are dedicated to educating Georgia citizens, community schools, and restaurants about life-threatening allergic reactions, risk management procedures, and how to enact an emergency action plan. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Polton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 10th, June 16th, 2015, as Food Allergy Awareness Week in Polton County and encourage all citizens to become aware of the dangers of food allergies and how to successfully manage food allergies to promote a safer, healthier community. That's exactly what I could ask.
On behalf of Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta on the west side of the county, we would like to thank you, the commissioners, for your support, and we'd also like to thank all the nurses and educators in Polton County who create safe environments for food allergic students every day. Thank you.
Thank you. My wife's one of those people that works at the cantaloupe, watermelon, peanuts, and a lot of allergies, so I understand where you're coming from. The Board would like to present the Lupus Awareness Month proclamation to Kim Brero and Patty Pacer. If y'all would be. Lupus Awareness Month, whereas lupus is an acute chronic lifelong autoimmune disease in which the immune system is unbalanced, causing inflammation and tissue damage to virtually every organ in the body, whereas lupus can affect any part of the body, including skin, lungs, heart, kidneys, and brain. No organ is spared. This disease can cause seizures, strokes, heart attacks, miscarriages, and organ failure. Whereas an estimated 1.5 million Americans have lupus, approximately 55,000 Georgians are living with lupus. Whereas lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because of its symptoms or similar to those of many other illnesses, and major gaps exist in understanding the causes of lupus. More than half of all people with lupus take four or more years and visit three or more doctors before obtaining a correct diagnosis. Whereas the effect of lupus on a family can be devastating in that it is chronic lifelong and life-threatening disease. Despite its prevalence, it remains one of the least recognizable and most misunderstood diseases, labeling lupus as the cruel mystery. And whereas there's only been one new drug approved by U.S. Food and Drug Administration specifically for lupus in 53 years, current treatments for the disease can have damaging side effects. And whereas Polton County joins the Georgia chapter of Lupus Foundation of America and other interested agencies and organizations in promoting awareness about lupus, research and education. Now therefore, I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Polton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Lupus Awareness Month throughout Polton County and urge citizens to become knowledgeable about the impact of lupus on the human body, families, workplace, and communities in Georgia.
On behalf of the Georgia Chapter and the Lupus Support, sorry, on behalf of the Georgia Chapter and the Dallas Lupus Support Group, Kim Piero and I would like to thank you for this proclamation acknowledging lupus awareness in Polton County. We pray that in our lifetime, a cure for lupus will be discovered, but in the meantime, the goal of the Dallas Support Group is to educate and raise awareness of this cruel disease. Thank you.
Thank you. No invited guests, no better words. Reports from committees and departments. Tommy Leonard with Keep Polton Beautiful.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I see that Commissioner Carl Michael got the memo. It sounded me and him were post-press today. Thank you for allowing me just a few minutes to give y'all a briefing. Just want to give you a brief update on the recent cleanup event sponsored by Keep Polton Beautiful on Saturday, May the 2nd. Seventy volunteers assembled just outside the Veterans Park after a short briefing. The volunteers went out in teams and picked up litter of various roads. And some roads that we picked up included Gold Mine Road near the WMA, Devo Road past Ingalls, 381, and Rosedale Road, and I believe Commissioner Panell, he picked up a road as well, and you also did, Commissioner Crowe. Thank you, thank you for that. We actually got eight bags of litter from around the Governor complex, if you believe that. In all total, we had 74 bags that were collected and promptly disposed of. We also received 32 abandoned tires. Keep Polton Beautiful, we were formed and certified by Keep America Beautiful in the May of, uh, May of 2013. We're a board of volunteers with absolutely, absolutely no political agenda. We're just a group of local citizens concerned about our county and the quality of life for our citizens. This teamwork shows that no matter what, when we come together, we become a stronger community. And I just, uh, a special thanks, thank you to the Polton County Special Operations Division under the direction of Sergeant Keith Thomas. We want to thank Sergeant Thomas for providing us with the trash bags and the gloves. And the Special Operations Unit using inmate labor picks up miles of our roadway, roadways and hundreds of bags of litter each month. I just wanted to share some stats that I got from them recently, and this is from the Sheriff's Office. In the month of March, they worked 45 hours, 60 miles of roads were covered, 629 bags of trash picked up, 29 county roads were picked up. Month of April, 65 hours were worked, 67 miles of road covered, 690 bags of trash were picked up, and 15 county roads were picked up. So, special thank you to Sheriff Gullig and his team. And you know, we, we talked about it before, we can pick up every day until we get people to stop litter, we're always going to have a problem. And without the help of the Sheriff's Department, you could imagine what our roadways would look like. So, when people tell me, oh, the inmates need to be out there, the inmates need to be out there, folks, you just heard the numbers, they are out there and they're doing a great job. So, my hat's off to the Sheriff's Office. And I want to give a special thank you to the Polton County Water Department. Lori, thank you so much. They filled in 17 volunteers to clean up the Taylor Farm in Sweetwater Creek as well. We also, uh, we have, we form partnerships with Georgia Highlands College, and we've been working with them for three years. They fill in the team as well. And a thank you to my dear friend, Mary Carol Sheffield, and her 4-H members for joining us. And also the City of Hyrum Code Enforcement Officer Clifford McCready took out a group of, of East Polton, uh, East Polton High School Beta Club.
Wow.
Yes, it was a great turnout. And I'd like to thank all of the volunteers for making this the most successful cleanup that we have ever had in the history of Keep Polton Beautiful. Thank you for taking your time, each one of you, to come out on a beautiful Saturday morning. I know you had better things to do on a Saturday morning with your family, other things you could have attended to, but yet you came out and you showed the spirit of our community to help us on that beautiful day. Uh, if you have any questions about Keep Polton Beautiful, the waste transportation and recycling, I'd just be glad to answer them.
Tommy, you've done amazing job. We have been talking about this for years, but again, started a few months ago, and since that time, I've seen a major improvement in our roads look, and you know, we just make people more aware.
Absolutely.
Of pleasing, throwing out trash and, you know, having receptacles for it to go in, those type of things, but amazing job.
It is getting better, and it stinks us off. To all the volunteers, I'm just a steering wheel. I've got the best cord in the game could ever possibly be blessed with.
You did.
Keep Polton Beautiful, just great volunteers. And I thank y'all for everything you do for our support.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to call Frank Baker up, update on the course of progress with the creation of a felony drug accountability court. We have Judge Boogie with him. If you'd care to say a few words.
Let me know about Frank Haney, whether he's more elegant than I am on this list. Well, I appreciate that Judge, but absolutely, that's not correct. He's more elegant than I am. Mr. Chairman, Board, we appreciate the opportunity to come back and give you a, a little update. We're a little bit premature in giving this update. As you probably recall, I said we were going to move into this very slowly and do more research. Something came up that we wanted to let you know about today. It's positive, but it was a little bit quicker than we thought. And that is that we became aware of a startup grant that is out there for accountability courts. And there was a window, a very short window of time to apply. And so, we made a decision after we talked to several folks about it, and we made a decision to go ahead and apply for that grant. Doesn't mean we've, we're going to accept it, because we can't accept it, it's up to y'all to accept that grant. But that would cover the cost of helping us start up an accountability, an accountability court if we go in that direction. So, we have done that, and it was a little bit quicker than we thought we were going to be applying for any grants. And we'd met with our finance director, and we've had a lot of discussions about that, and we keep her apprised, as we want to keep you apprised of what's going on with it. But we're continuing to work forward. We've assembled our planning teams, which will eventually become the court team. And we've done some field work, and we're going to continue to do field work and research. Fortunately for us, there's a lot of accountability courts out there, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But it's just making the wheel for us what is going to be most practical for us to have a great operation. So, on behalf of the Judges, Judge Boogie's here, I want to turn it over to him. We appreciate the opportunity here. And we'll be in contact with you individually by coming out with us and making sense of what you're experiencing. Thank you.
Judge, I think you made some field trips that were very enlightening to you, and I think the Governor even tasked you with this for the future, so if you give us a little of that.
Sure. Thanks for that. We have visited two accountability courts. We're visiting another one, we're going up to Whitfield County this Thursday, we've been there once before. Judge Jack Partain is one of the pioneers of accountability courts and drug courts, and he's got an excellent program. So, what we've done is we've formed, we've got some people involved that if this is successful, and our hope is that we'll get the grant, we'll be successful, we'll be able to start this court next year, we need to have a drug court team. That means somebody from the Sheriff's Office, someone with treatment, somebody for probation, someone from the DA's office, somebody from the public defender's office. So, what we've got thus far, Chairman, is the semblance of what a team will look like. Of course, all of these people have questions, so one of the reasons we want to take this field trip is so that the guy, the local person from our Sheriff's Office can talk to the Whitfield County Sheriff's Deputy and say, "Look, how much time, what do you do?" And so, team members can talk with their counterparts. So, it's part of the education process, and if we're successful, we're able to get this going, we're going to be very welcome there. So, that's part of the reason for these field trips, and they'll be several.
If I understand correctly, this affects the whole family, and the recidivism is, should be very helpful for this. Just locking people up and punishing doesn't seem to work, I keep used to it.
If I can tell you a real quick story, there's a pastor in my neighborhood who was my wife's youth pastor of Lenguanet County, growing up, and just as fate would have it, we moved into this neighborhood in Polton County, and he's there. And he wouldn't mind me saying, I'm not going to use his name, but he's been very vocal about this. His son has been in and out of treatment, and in fact, my wife and I were honored to be able to help get him into a treatment facility last year. I talked to the pastor, I said, "How's your son?" This is last year. He said, "Dean, I was embarrassed to tell you, he checked himself out, and he's back to his old tricks." On Easter, I saw the pastor, I said, "How's your son?" He said, "He's excellent. He said, "He's eight months sober, he's doing great," on and on and on. And I said, "What made the difference?" He said, "Drug court." It changes lives, it saves lives. The recidivism rate that you mentioned is somewhere around 50% for people who are just locked up and then turned loose. If you successfully complete drug court, it's under 10%. So, it changes lives. So, we're excited about it, and we want to adopt that in Polton County, and we're making progress.
If I understand, Frank, the next procedure is it will come before this board to see if we will receive that grant, and we'll know more of what the cost would be to conduct the court?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's where we would be at that time. Incidentally, this grant, again, is for startup, and it covers the cost mainly of a coordinator, which is an integral part of this team, in making sure that you get off the ground well with it. Well, I think we'd come back as soon as we know those numbers and as soon as we are aware of it, we would have more understanding about how much it's going to cost long-term. And I know, we, we know that's an important thing for the board to, so we will.
Eventually, this, this will be a cost of Polton County, but it should be worth every dime.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there will be some cost, and it will be worth every dime.
Cost is a, is a understandable concern. I don't expect to have to ask the county for anything, at least for the first year, hopefully beyond that. The idea of the grant, and then there are some, some, some other funds that I think might be available. There's, what's it called? Is it there? That's a state, state fund that's only usable for drug and alcohol treatment. We're hoping some of those funds will be available. So, I don't expect to have to come back anytime soon and say, "We need county funds." That's, that's not the work. One day, you know how grants are. Can you count on them year after year after year? I don't know, but at least initially, I think we can fund it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, it's public participation on Agenda Idles, KPMs, 191 Ogden Road, Rockmark, Division of Title.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank Commissioner Collatt for stepping up to bring more openness through government, through this resolution, 1550. Not editing out the citizens' comments is a good beginning. Some would like everyone to believe that our recently elected commissioners are focused on one issue. That's not true. I listened to what they had to say during their campaigns, and I'm proud to see them following through on those promises. I've seen them listen to the citizens and take time from their busy life, take time from their busy lives to speak here and sometimes dealing with uncomfortable feedback for exercising their First Amendment right to address our government by speaking out. This same group of citizens has spoken to you about safety issues in some of our parks, the conditions of our roads, agriculture, and pet chickens, to name a few. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were excited to participate in the Keep Polton Beautiful cleanup. We had a group that went out with them. What's going on at the airport is only a symptom of a much bigger problem. These commissioners appear to be focused on making Polton a better place through open, honest, and ethical government. They're listening, they're paying attention, and they're giving me hope that once again we can have a community in which everyone works together and takes care of their neighbors. I'd like to see that you take this even a little bit further and broadcast these meetings live. They do it in our Capitol. Every committee meeting has a live broadcast, if you can click on it and get a live broadcast anytime during any meetings. Through resolutions such as 1550, they're keeping their promises they campaigned on. They're slowly getting us back to where we should be. They are the promise keepers we so need to heal our communities. Thank you.
77 Nunbeath Road, Dallas.
Nunbeath Drive, Dallas. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity. Sensitiveness leads to a dictatorship. Every woman and child in this country, every man, woman, and child in this country should have the opportunity to hear and see everything that's being said and done in this meeting, from the time it is gavelled to order until it is gavelled to close. This should include any citizens that has chosen to address this commission about agreements that, that they may have. It also should include any questions or comments that citizens may have during a public hearing, such as the upcoming public hearing on your proposed budget, Mr. Chairman. It is very vital in a democratic society that all voices be heard. If this was not valid, then there would be no provision for a citizen to address this commi, this commission. Prior to your election as Commission Chairman, I can remember the time that you were in complete agreement with the medium being video from gavel to gavel. Fact is, during the 2008 campaign for County Commission Chairman, you and I were sitting on the front row of a Commissioners' meeting that was being chaired by Jerry Sharon, the then Commissioner's Chairman. Tom Panell, who's now Commissioner, was addressing the Commissioners that day about a secret letter being sent out proposing a secret way to propose a, a secret tax increase. I was videoing the meeting that day, of Tom Panell that day, and you were quite pleased and was in complete agreement to that meeting being videoed. I believe the record will reflect that your brother also spoke at that meeting, Mr. Boyd Austin. I remember the time that all the meetings were, were unedited in their entirety. Fact is, citizens often had a dialogue with Commissioners both before and after they made their table, and many problems were, were resolved as a result of such dialogue. Fact is, as a result of the dialogue between Commissioners, between Citizen Panell and Chairman Sharon on that day, no tax increase was proposed for that year. Open, honest, and transparent government and the right to air one's grievances against a government that is doing things secretly and in the color of darkness needs to be heard in a public forum, not only by those that are in attendance at this meeting, but also those that are unable to attend these meetings due to work, school, or what have you. The 200 to 250 people that can, that can possibly attend this meeting should not be the only ones that are entitled to know everything that has been said in, during this meeting. Plus, the cost of editing this video is very costly. No editing of a public meeting should ever occur. The schooling that most of, if not all of you have attended that provided by the ACCG also supports the videoing of the meetings in their entirety. Some counties even provide the meetings live. I noticed on the local website last night some statements that would attribute it to you, Mr. Chairman, about the bond rate being higher if this resolution is passed. Mr. Chairman, I'm calling you out on that. Many, many meetings, these, those people responsible for the bonds were in this very room, they've been in the courthouse hearing the problems that we have with airports, they've been in the IBA meeting, and that has nothing to do whatsoever with, with the cost of the bonds and, and the bond rates going up. Our bond rate has nothing whatsoever to do with what citizens made or may not say, but rather is based on the ability to have a certain level of rainy day funds along with a tax base capable of paying the bonds off, and the ability to raise the taxes to cover the bond debts. I am more concerned about the ethics, ethics of you aligning the IGA agreement to be done pro bono by an attorney acting for the bonding agent of a recently- acting for the bonding agent of a recently issued bond for the county.
Time's up.
This certainly would not have prompted me to send out today.
I'll make a motion and give you a couple more minutes, please.
Well, he needs to acknowledge the time, okay? This is what we've been going through. Y'all have all discussed it, so he needs to acknowledge that his time's up. Do you have any more time?
Two minutes.
One second. I thank all the veterans in this room.
We have other on the condition.
Mr. Carl Michael, Mr. Crowe, Martina, Del Mar, any of the rest of the veterans in here for this opportunity.
Dana Siffolow, 452 Somerset Drive.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak today. I would like to state that I am opposed to changing the public participation ordinance to allow the broadcast of the citizen participation portion of the meeting. Public participation should exist as one avenue of allowing citizens to voice how they choose to be governed to their elected officials. The public participation portion of the meeting does not exist as a taxpayer-funded conduit for citizens to promote or promulgate innuendo, accusations, commentary, opinions, or ideologies. Privately-funded YouTube channels, Facebook pages, blogs, websites, Blog Talk Radio, talk shows, and local forums come to mind as a problem place for the dissemination of such citizen-led or sponsored discussion. As an SEO professional, I am more than aware of the problems with these mediums, including the cost and time to promote them to have a large enough viewership to make an impact. It is truly a formidable task, and I am sure that you're more than aware of this. This is in no way a First Amendment issue. The issue here today is that time is short before the next election cycle. I am sure this will be passed with a three to two vote, and that the speeches for the next meeting are probably being written as I speak. Stay tuned, folks, for the next episode of As Political Terms in two weeks. What relevatory bombshell will be dropped? Who will rat who out? Who will accuse who of being a dirty, rattling scoundrel? And while some of you may think that this theater is great, especially if it suits your sponsor's agenda, offices is merely doing is opening up a Pandora's Box. Case in point, I am sure that some of you are absolutely recoiling in horror at the thought of Bernie Sanders being president, but I am surely looking forward to seeing myself on the Comcast TV wearing my T-shirt. But remember, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. In all seriousness, we have a lot of ascension and dirty laundry in Paulding County at the moment, and we don't need to be broadcasting it to the world or making it any easier to find than it already is. The division in the county poses an existential threat to the sanctity of government and in the ability to govern ourselves in a simple manner. I've yet to see anyone on either side really trying to fix the mess that we're in. The passage of this amendment is merely going to add fuel to the flames in the forthcoming months. What is the purpose of this? Do we really want to scare new families and businesses from moving here? Do we want to drive away existing businesses and families? Has anyone thought about the unintended consequences of this? Paulding County citizens deserve answers as to what the true agenda is here. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to address a few things said there. I was made aware of this about four years ago on a trip to New York meeting with Moody's and Standard and Poor's. They're rating agencies that rate the county bonds. Today, we're at double A-plus. Even through the recession, through the horrible times we've been through, we maintain a double A-plus rating. Now, everything that's written negative about Paulding, everything that's said on this channel negative about Paulding affects our bond rate. You talked to the people that went to New York with me. We were made aware that they knew more about our county than we knew about our county. And, you know, today, I'm proud to say double A-plus, but if anything in the future causes us to drop a little bit, I'm not going to take responsibility for it. I've sent through Instructor Ken Gerard's classes, about a half a dozen of, beginning classes and advanced. And recently, last day or so, we spoke, and he said, "When you come to class, pay attention, carry back stuff, but there's things that, when you carry it back, make sure you understand. When you implement it, it could affect the county negatively." We give the citizens all the time in the world to come up here and speak of the participation before and afterwards. I just chose not to add that after visiting New York because it does affect our bond rate. And so, you know, what's said and done here, even among us, or anything written in the paper, does have an effect. So just to let you know, from this day forward, if we go below our double A-plus, I will not take responsibility for that. Now, we've got new business item, number one, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a development agreement with Sun Unai Dallas Partners LLC to construct a right turn lane on Cedar Crest Road at Dallas-Acquahore Highway, Scott R.
Yeah, I have trouble with that one, too. I've tried to spell it about 18 times leading up to this. I think it's Semunyek, but I'm not sure. Thank you for considering this. Cedar Crest Road is our third most traveled county road and is in our plans for future widening long-term. Until we can find the money for expansion, one of the best things we can do is improve intersections. The most important improvement that we can do to a signalized intersection is ensure that we have both left and right turn lanes. All along Cedar Crest Road, excuse me, got to dial for a minute. Along Cedar Crest Road, we have several signalized intersections. The most congested right now is at crossroads at Cedar Crest and Dallas-Acquahore Highway. At this intersection, the eastbound approach turning towards Dallas does not have a right turn lane. This contributes to severe backups during the peak hours. Now that the southwest corner is under construction, we have an opportunity to have some improvements included while the developer is working on their own improvements. We propose to pay for the improvements on a reimbursement basis so that we can inspect and approve the work as it progresses before payment's made. This method should give us better results and lesser disruption to the traveling public versus doing the work as a standalone county project at a later date. We have determined through separate bids taken that the price is competitive and cost-effective. The price is $70,233. Lonnie Skipper and Jason Phillips assisted in preparation of this agreement for your review. We recommend approval of the development agreement. Semunyek Dallas Partners for this project to be paid with FY15 general fund DMT budget dollars. Do you have any questions, or any further answers?
Do you have any questions, Scott? Just so you know, this is the corner where there was a broken store, and because of its historical nature, we were never really able to improve that situation. When that building is gone, this then does allow us to move forward and make this turn.
Yes, sir. And the roadway was very confined there, going back to the 50s, I imagine. And the building actually was on roadway, part of the county roadway today. Unfortunately, it couldn't be saved because of deterioration and damage. And through the, I guess, the bright side of this development, one of the reasons is that we will be able to put in a turn lane now.
Any other questions?
Chairman.
Thank you.
That area out there, I've got several phone calls. People want some relief, and we would have to say this.
Thank you. I was asked at a church why we let the broken store down this door, and I said, "It's their store." So, you know, it has some historical value, but they said it would not be worth trying to preserve it and move it and save it. So that was a family decision.
That's correct. And the family actually did save the wall with the Coca-Cola mural, and carried it off somewhere. I'm not sure what they're doing with it. And they saved some of the board parts of the building. They were able to save the memories, I guess, associated with that.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Number two, discuss action to adopt resolution 1515, amend in section 2, dash 61 of the Paulding County Code of Ordinance regarding the videotaping and broadcast. Board of Commissioners meet with Bernard Collet.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, attending ACCG has been really a positive thing for me. I see a lot of value in it. I'm glad Georgia's required that the Congress get to do that. I too sent Ken Gerard's class, and this is where this came up. He asked a question, how many counties actually recorded the meetings? And of course, I was proud to raise my hand. Then he asked how many edited them. And he wasn't too favorable about that. He said, in his opinion, he'd like to see every county in Georgia record them and not edit them. And I'm just trying to put it in place when I learn in ACCG, and think that helps honest and transparent government.
Yep.
I'd like to say that I'm a strong supporter of our freedom of speech. I was one of those who wound up in Vietnam, serving my country. And serving our country, that's one of our rights, is our freedom of speech. Chairman may have mentioned a district office on a bond. I don't know whether that's right or wrong. Bernard Collet, sometime back, made this statement that sometimes doing the right thing does cost us. And I've found that doing the right thing sometimes costs us for a short period of time, but in the long run, it's still the right thing to do.
Can I ask, how long have we had a bond rate?
Four, even an approved rate in Otown.
So we've been in pretty good shape with our bond rate, right? Used to, we would video it from gavel to gavel. I say, "We," before I ever got here, it was gavel to gavel, unedited. And I think it's a positive thing for us to do. I understand some people may be having some concerns, but there's been people that have come up to the podium and said things against me that it wasn't, that it was a joy to hear. But the bottom line is that I signed up for this job, and I know that not everybody's going to agree with everything that I do. And I think it's a freedom that we have. Folks come up and share their views and their opinions with us, and we should listen. And it's sent out for other people to hear. There are a lot of people that can't get here, working and whatever, and so I'm in agreement to that. And I too have learned that with the ACCG. It may not be everything there that I agree with, but after talking to Commissioners and attorneys in other counties, I see where they stand on the issue. I've learned a little bit in classes through the years, and I think it's a good thing for us to do to broadcast that. Any other?
I've got a thought. I probably should have called y'all. Been up to here and other things. Would you think it would be positive to further the amendment to citizens wishing to speak, be allowed to speak on one topic, maybe quarterly rather than monthly, like one of the citizens that's voted alone? Some of the citizens speak on the same thing, month after month after month. And people have come to me and said, "Why do y'all allow that?" You know, I'm a freedom of speech person, too, served, but maybe we could amend. Of course, it would require somebody to track it, but just saying, if you're going to speak on the airport, maybe quarterly would be enough. If you're going to speak on animal control, quarterly would be enough rather than every month. Having some limitation there.
Yep. That's the conclusion of our regular business session. There's no declaration of citizens wishing to speak. Do I hear a bunch of them?
Chairman, I appreciate you letting me talk about vets earlier, but the activity, the event out there, I scribbled down some notes just while we were sitting here. I would like to say one thing about vets. We wanted to find out the oldest vet, and when we got to 90 and older, there were still six veterans standing. And so we asked of those six, and three of them were 93 years old. One of them's got a store up in Foxhole in Oniwojima. It's probably my favorite. We had a Tuskegee Airman there, a black bombardier pilot that was really a treat. One of them, about vets, there was a company called Veterans Enterprises that had a booth, and their mission is to try to help veterans start businesses and give them the background, the training, education they need to do that. There's a huge educational piece. I believe it was 16 students in Paulding County got a ride at a T-6 for winning the contest in their respective school. So there's a PTA involvement and educational piece where they got rewarded with a flight. There are a lot of ROTC students out there. There was a military piece. Kelly Comstock's daughter set the record for the female flex extension where you hang on a bar. So I think she's got a T-shirt, I think, Kelly.
Can you do that?
All the services were out there. The Air Force actually had a simulator where you could, for free, just get in a simulator for 15 minutes with an Air Force instructor in there with you. Other airplanes, like the C-130 Hercules, made over here at Marietta, that you get up in the cockpit and pilot with, you hold a stick and do other things as far as education piece. There's a lot of humor out there. There was a jet-powered outhouse that would putt down the runway, which caused everybody laughter. And then there's a jet-powered school bus that actually went down the runway faster than the airplane flying beside it. So the school bus won the race. However, it had stopped where the end because it certainly wasn't going to take off. There was a musical element. They had a lot of country music during the break, which was fun. There are actually two aircrafts sold on the property that I'm aware of because the aircraft manufacturer had a booth out there. I guess the most gratifying to me was the departments working together, and Major LaHome and her staff worked 18-hour days just to make sure all avenues were covered up. I had a radio, and if you just listened to the radio, the conversation for 15 minutes, you would just see how many people were working together. There was a lady with a infant child that parked on the parkway, so she had about a quarter of a mile walk. On the radio, somebody said, "Go pick up this lady." And in 30 seconds, a mule was up there so that this lady wouldn't have to carry her child any further. And also, what do you call those that you could carry children? Strollers.
Waves?
Waves.
Wags.
But, you know, one of the intangibles, as we talked about a couple months ago, when we were approving by vote to support the airshow, was just departments working together. It was intangible that have other events, but nothing quite that large. So I think it was something that's a great benefit for our county. This is the emergency. It had to be prepared for emergencies, and so it puts our departments ready and prepared to handle other emergencies. Last thing, there was, there was a college educational piece. Pennsyl State University had their aerial robotics team out there in a booth and were doing demonstrations. They were covered up the whole time, the whole two days. And Dr. Khalid, who's a Department of Industrial Engineering, wrote a letter and, or an email, and said that it generated great interest for Pennsyl State University and the aerial robotics team. So, and there's also an Aviation-Aerospace Expo out there, a huge tent that all the aerospace companies in Paulding County have an exhibit to show the parts that they're constructing for Lockheed or constructing for Lockheed or Gulfstream, so that's very educational. There's a lot more, but that's just what I jotted down here while we were having our meeting. Sorry about that.
David, thank you. Thank you for coming, Bernard. Thank you for being there. If you didn't come, you missed a treat. It was fabulous. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. All the favors, say aye.